Prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Keith Higgins, First Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come right now saying how we thank you. Thank you for being a God that sits high and still looks low. Thank you for being a forgiving God, a holy and a righteous God. Lord, we come right now, ask you to bless this city council. Bless them individually and bless them as a whole. Bless these citizens that stand in agreement to be able to improve our society. We come praying for peace and harmony throughout our city. No matter what ward or zone that there might be, we pray for your love and your support. We ask you to heal us where we are broken. Put us back together. Make us as one. We are stronger together than separate. Let no color, no creed, no political differences tear us apart. We come asking these prayers that everything be done decent and in order. We ask you to grant us the peace and harmony that we read about. We thank you for loving us as we continue to extend our love to one another. Teach us how to forgive. Teach us how to have compassion. Teach us how to love ye one another. And Father God, when it's all said and done, and we have put our differences aside, let your peace that pass all understanding flow from one home to another, from one heart to another, from one school to another, from one business to another, but most of all, from one family to another. And Lord, we will give you the praise, honor, and glory that you deserve. Grant us the peace and harmony like only you can. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Amen.
I'd like to ask Ms. Lang the latest from our pledge.
You'll all face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Senior Deputy Clerk, would you call a roll in the Assembly of Corn, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor McClendon. City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Charlie Suter Jr. Counselor Bruce.
Here.
Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Kroom.
Here.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
And Counselor Willis. We have 9:10.
Coram being present, first thing the council will need to do is to elect a chairperson for this meeting today.
I'll make a motion to trace the chairs, let the chairs.
Any other discussion or any of your nominations? All in favor? Any opposed? On the agenda, the first item you have are bid openings for a Ford F-150 pickup. Do you wish to accept those or refer them to administration for disposition?
I defer back to administration for...
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second to refer the bids for the Ford F-150 back to administration. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. The approval or correction of the minutes from the April 20th meeting? Are there any corrections or additions that need to be made?
Motion to approve.
There is a motion and second to approve the minutes from the April 20th, '23 meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion is approved. We have third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit.
It's an ordinance...
I make a motion, we table it.
Second.
There is a motion and a table to... Motion and a second table for two weeks.
Two weeks?
For two weeks. A motion by Mr. Monday, a second by Mr. Bruce, to table for two weeks. All in favor? Any opposed?
No. I would like to table it indefinitely.
We will... We can bring that back up in two weeks.
Second, a motion.
Under New Business Resolution R-1, I'm going to refer to Counselor Mohammed at this point.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion that we read R-1 and O-1 by title only.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
This is a resolution certifying the condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or residential structures constituting a nuisance within the city of West Memphis corporate limits.
You've heard the resolution read, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? It's a motion by Mr. Kroom, seconded by Counselor Mohammed for approval. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. City Clerk, would you please issue a resolution number?
That will be Resolution Number 2279.
City Attorney, O-1.
O-1 is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1201 Lancaster, permitting a duplex in a MRM mixed residential medium zoning district.
Ordinance is read for the first time, is there any other action you wish to take on it this time?
I would like to make a motion that we read out this ordinance.
A seconded motion.
There's a motion by Counselor Kroom to place this ordinance on its second reading, with a second by Counselor Holt. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I would like to know what's the urgency of it.
I can let the property owner speak on that issue?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, ma'am.
I just like to know, we are placing it on the second reading. I just want to know what's the emergency or what's the urgency of having us read it for the second and third time?
The urgency?
There is no emergency. It's just a matter of getting it, it's a two-story structure, and getting it constructed while we've got good weather.
Are we proposing Counselor Kroom to just place it on the second reading today and reading it out at the next council meeting? Are you proposing to read all three?
No, ma'am, I was...
If I may, one on the floor, please.
No, ma'am, I was hoping that we could read it out today so that that gentleman could get started. We've had a housing issue in this city for a while, and I figured the quicker we could get something started. And you're going to hear another one come up later on.
We have a waiting list for these two units, if that makes a difference. And you're right, there is a terrible housing shortage in the town, especially with rental units. We have a list this long.
If I may, there was other comment?
I just said, let's read it out, man, I'll let him go and do his building and get himself straightened up. I think one of your houses is right behind me.
Sir?
I think one of your places is right behind me. It would be nice to get them finished up.
Okay. You're talking about on Danner?
Yes.
I'm trying desperately.
So before we read this out totally, of course, I see here that it is a Planning Commission recommendation. So that means that you've gone through all of the proper boards, all of the procedures and everything, all of your licenses, everything, Ms. Patricia, he's on top of it all?
That would be...
We have done that.
Planning and development.
Is Ms. Felix in here?
Yeah.
Everything has been met, okay.
There is a motion and a second, place it on the second reading. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? City Attorney?
Second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1201 Lancaster, permitting a duplex in a MRM mixed residential medium zoning district.
Is there a motion to place this on its third and final reading?
Motion to suspend the rules and place it on the third and final reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to place the ordinance on its third and final reading. All in favor? Any opposed? City Attorney?
It's third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1201 Lancaster, permitting a duplex in a MRM mixed residential medium zoning district.
You have heard the resolution read for the third and final time, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? City Clerk?
That ordinance number will be 2634.
Next item on the agenda is permission request. Administration is requesting permission to grant a six-month moratorium to prohibit the installation of mobile homes in designated zoning areas, mixed residential high density. Thank you. From Broadway to 25th Street. 25th Street to SL Henry. SL Henry to Walker, until at such time Planning and Development can research the negative impacts from the abundance of mobile homes in these areas. Is there a motion to approve their request?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to approve permission request. Any other discussion?
Can I ask one question? Is this where we have... Is this the area where we have started the housing project down there?
Yes.
Oh, it is that area? Then we just removed all the mobile homes?
Yeah, that's also where the new one, the new house will be built.
Yeah.
Now, once the six months moratorium is up, what happens then? Is that enough time for us to establish what we are trying to establish on this particular permission request?
When Planning Commission reports back to the council, we'll know the path of which we will be following at that time.
Now, those residents that are there in those mobile homes, this is not saying that they will have to relocate or anything. I'm sure it's not.
No, ma'am, this is a moratorium on new...
From keeping any...
New installation.
From coming in.
Yes, ma'am. City Attorney?
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about moratoriums because this is... You know, a moratorium is a pretty serious issue, and it's not to be taken lightly. And the reason I say that is because you're talking about a property right of certain people who may own property in that area. And so, you know, one of the things that has to... You can put moratoriums on certain issues, but you have... They have to be rationally related to health, you know, protecting health, safety, general welfare, and property values of other property owners. And so I just want to make sure that all that is being taken into consideration if we're talking about imposing a moratorium. And, you know, each one of these situations depends upon the facts of each situation. So those are the types of factors that we need to be looking into. And as far as the length of time, I don't know how long it's going to take to do this study, but the shorter the period of time that we impose the moratorium, probably the better, simply because you're... It's a property right, which is a constitutional right, protected by the Constitution of the United States. So we've got to be real careful about that kind of stuff. So six months, I don't know where... You know, if that's a figure that's related to any particular study period of time, but if it's just an arbitrary figure, we need to kind of think about that.
So right now, City Attorney, what you're saying that if council were to pass this permission request, no motor home... Mobile homes can go in this particular area until after this study has been done to see whether it's feasible for them not to move anymore in there or to see if they need a little bit more time to study it.
Right, I mean, in my opinion, and I haven't talked to... I don't know who the permission request came from. I don't know if it was from the Planning Commission or the mayor, whoever. I did not discuss it with either one of those departments, but you could always make it a 90-day period and then extend it again if the study period, if it had... Wasn't enough time. And, but yeah, I mean, you're talking about an area that's already designated under a recent zoning ordinance that we passed, which was passed within the last couple of years, I think, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know exactly what the date was. I know Mr. Lucker was here when it was passed, and so it's been about that period of time. But it's just something that shouldn't be taken lightly. You know, we're talking about people's property rights, which, you know, if you put yourself in their position, you know, you don't want to be told what to do with property that you've already purchased that's been properly zoned for the particular structure that you may want to put there, okay? I'm not saying we can't do a moratorium. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that we need to be careful and we need to make sure we're taking into consideration these factors in this future study. And we need to tie it to a period of time that's not just an arbitrary six months. It needs to be a period of time that's really going to consider how long a study might take.
Have we had any negative... Have we had any feedback from any of the residents who are owners of mobile homes in that area thus far? Whoever is in charge of this? We have people here now who's opposing it?
We have some individuals who have signed up for citizens' requests, but I did not see the application, so I don't even know what they're speaking on. If I may ask, Ms. Felix is... Great. Can you shed some clarity on administration's position on this?
Can we have someone to come up now?
That's what I was asking.
They shouldn't pass it if we have citizens here opposing it.
If I may, Ms. Felix, can you come before the council and maybe add some clarity to administration's position on this?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It is the mayor's intention to clean up the city. As you know, we've been doing quite a bit of demolition in that area where the mobile homes are. We're looking at some housing development. Therefore, he really does not want mobile homes in that area. We're trying to develop it. And that is the position... Not trying to speak for the mayor, but that's the position that he's in right now. He's just wanting to clean that area up. And the mobile homes, most of them are in horrible shape.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's his position. Realize what you're saying. It's currently zoned for that. We would like to have some time to kind of do a study to see how it would impact. Maybe get some input from that area of citizens.
Do you feel like six months is sufficient time or...
Six months would be sufficient.
Actually, I would like, before we take any action on this, I would really like to hear from the people who are owners of homes over there. Because I don't think it... In my own opinion, I don't think it would be fair for us to go ahead and move on this, even with the six months moratorium. And we have citizens here who are coming to express their concerns about where they live and their livelihoods.
Of course.
I would like to make a motion...
That was my question. If there is... If there's anyone in the audience that lives in this area that...
Well, this young lady has purchased property over there with the intent of bringing in mobile homes and refurbish them.
Ms. Felix, one quick question. Just refresh our memories. The reason we changed that zoning over there was to establish this housing subdivision.
It has not been changed. It's still zoned for that. It's still zoned for mobile homes, the area that we're talking about. It is zoned for that currently.
For mobile homes?
Yes.
If I may, Ms. Mary Jefferson, is she here today? With counsel's permission, is go ahead and move citizens' quest up and let her address her concerns.
Second.
Okay. It's motion and second to realter the agenda. All in favor? Thank you. Ms. Jefferson, if you would please... If you would please state your name and address.
Mayor Frances Jefferson, 805 East Broadway.
And you're entitled to five minutes.
Sir?
Five minutes.
Okay. Well, my concern, I live at 805 East Broadway, and my concern is the area in Ward 2. Wong's Grocery is right on the corner from where I live. And for some reason or another, that's the hangout for a lot of drug addicts and drunks. And two weeks ago, young lady's car glass was broken in the daytime because she stayed too long in the grocery store. And nothing is being done about the hanging out. It's always someone laying on the sidewalk. The drunks are hanging out there. The police aren't doing anything. I tried one day to speak to the mayor about it. The vacant building that is between me and Wong's, the glass fell out one day. I asked the mayor about getting someone down there to clean up the glass. I swept it up in a pile. He refused to even get somebody down there. And I told him, I said, "The children are going by here in the afternoon, going to the store." He said, "They are not his." So in other words, he don't care. He had told us he was going to go paint Wong's and my building. Instead, they spent money and put up boards to try and camouflage the building when the building really needs to be torn down. And I spoke to Councilman Hutchinson and Poyam. They made a phone call, and five minutes later, someone from sanitation was there to sweep up the glass. The mayor could have did the same thing. So I feel like I got a mayor that really don't care what's going on in Ward 2. And those are my concerns. Something need to be done about the area and the people that are living in the area and the drunks that's hanging out on the side of Wong's. I've been there 20 years, and nobody seems to care.
Excuse me. I'm Alderman Bruce. And if you have any issues, please make sure you contact me or Ms. Hudson.
I have.
And make sure you get our information, and we'll be happy to work with you.
And at least can we go back and address this issue about the land out on the sidewalk? Can we follow up and talk? And try to see what we can do from that point to implement something for safety and for betterment?
Because I don't need my vehicle tow. And it's there on the street at all times.
Your truck is parked there... Your truck is parked there sometimes on the street.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I know what you're talking about.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Tammy Thomas, are you here to address this specific issue we're speaking of now? If you would, please come forward. If you would give your name and address in five minutes.
My name is Tammy Thomas. Address being 1658 Church Road West in Horn Lake, Mississippi. I'm the owner of Queen Jew Realtor, and I'm in attendance with me are my colleagues, Shante and Rashida Bean. Collectively, we have obtained 13 properties in Broadway subdivision. Our goal is, as normal, to develop the community. We plan to provide single-family along with multifamily dwellings at affordable cost, of course. And I'm just asking the city officials to make this project successful. We plan to meet our recommendations and qualifications as knowledgeable as we can and to follow all the rules and regulations of West Memphis. Hopefully, together, we can solve the housing issues that are in the community. And just from my views of being here, I pretty much do the bulk of my construction. Well, I say the cleaning of the properties myself, and I'm hands-on with a lot of people in the community within a short period of time. And I've noticed that it's not the homes themselves because 90% of those people are poverty-stricken or either on fixed income. And if someone was to want to take a step, I would think in order to clean up the community, a good choice would be to just probably get together and let's try to do it. Because a lot of them don't have the money or what they need to clean their houses up, or probably not even the health to get out and clean their land. I'm quite sure that they probably would because with me cleaning up and picking up around the neighborhood, I noticed that a couple of people walked outside and cleaned up around their areas as well if they see it being done. So it's a thing that you can't just force people out of their homes, and if they're... That's probably all they have. And I, myself, with my property that I have obtained, unbeknownst to me, my fences and things were taken down and everything by what I was told was instructed by the mayor to go on my property and remove all my fence lines and everything thus far. And I don't have... I hadn't had any issues besides, yes, there are people hanging out and things like that. And, you know, that's just one of those things that happen in the world. Unfortunately, we can't change that. We can only just change our own actions, and that would be a great start.
I have a question. Now, where is this property located that you purchased?
Broadway Park subdivision.
What street is that?
I have...
That's on a different side.
Right.
That's not down by Jackson.
It's on the north side.
That's...
Yeah, it's on the north side. Well, I was being told that this was the housing with the trailer parks and things like that. I'm in the trailer park area.
That's...
But not within the specific location that we're referring to?
That's a totally different area.
The trailers?
Yeah, it's a totally different area.
You're not over by SL Henry, you're not over by Walker?
No.
I was being told that that was the exact same... That was the same area that we were looking into, so I do apologize. But I am in the trailer park where they...
It's not.
Okay, sorry.
It's probably, what? Eight to 15 trailers, where you're talking about, right off Broadway. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's a totally different area.
Beside the big pink... Beside the old red building?
Yeah, that's real.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Totally different area.
Okay, sorry, I do apologize.
But Ms. Thomas, you do... You do have, I mean, you're purchasing that property. Is that what you did?
I have 13 in the Broadway Park subdivision. So I was assuming, everyone, that that's what I was supposed to be here to discuss, that area. Because, I mean, we're being told conflicting things, like we can't... We can't bring in our mobile homes. We can't do this. And I have 13 properties there that I'm trying to develop.
You're going to build a multifamily complex?
Different things, yes, yes.
So you've got a viable idea here that's still presented to the council, so...
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Harris, is she here? Please, would you come forward? Is this in relation to the issue that we are speaking on right now? Okay. Or is that the same park? Okay, all right.
That's totally different area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What I would like to say is, in reference to the area about the new wonder, you know, I've lived here all my life. And basically, those trailers have been there for quite some time. And I think most of the people that... Well, the property is probably owned by someone who does not even live there. And that area has gone down. They haven't tried to keep it up or clean it up. So I think the study for the moment, the study would be good because we need to do something in that area to try to improve that area.
But I think...
That's Mr. Monday's area, but I was raised, raised right there in that area. And it's been a tough situation, I think, for that area for the longest.
I think Ms. Thomas has a viable project. And if we can direct her to how she can change that area to a more...
Different area.
Yes, so...
It's a different area, Mr. Thomas.
I know it's a different area. I know exactly where she's talking about, but if it's some rezoning or something we need to do or something, we need to look at it.
I'm not talking about... I'm not talking about what she's talking about.
That's in Ward 4, right?
Yes.
I'm talking about Ward 5.
I'm talking about Ward 4, where she came up and made her point. We all know it's not the area we were talking about originally, but it is an area that could use some...
It could.
Some improvement.
From my understanding, we are about Walker Street. She doesn't do geography, but it looks like we are about Walker Street.
Okay.
Say what?
No.
Yeah, we're in Walker though. We have...
They are in the area where we're talking about.
Okay, so this... And that's considered 803? Okay, so this, and that's considered eight oh three? So, so that is eight oh three? Eight oh five East Broadway.
Are you on both, are you on, are you in the, beside the dread building and on Walker? Are you in both areas? Have you obtained property? You know, if that's something you don't know right off, because we were just trying to understand. Well, no, the reason why I ask, that's okay, we'll figure it out. We were trying to figure out specifically, this what we're discussing the most right now. Directly is for Ward Five, right?
Well, we're discussing, from my understanding, this south of Broadway. Right. Down to Warner Junior High.
Right.
It does not address any of the properties north of Broadway.
Right.
But we got off on that subject.
And I don't know how we got off on that. That's Ward Four.
But Ms. Thomas, whatever you decide to do, it's gonna be an improvement.
I'd like to make a motion to table this particular agenda item until we can get a clear understanding of exactly what we are talking about.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, there's a motion to second to table the permission request for a moratorium. The only concern that I have, a lot of improvements have been made. A lot of the light has been taken out. A lot of the substandard structures have been removed. There was one, I think, recently brought in within the very recent past. I don't know if it was last seven days or, but I don't know if it met the standard of where I think administration is wanting to go with the improvements, the long-term improvements to the area. Now, that would be the only, within the next two weeks, you could have twenty more brought in. If they not meeting a certain standard for the long-term aspect of that area, is that what you wish to do?
We have a a motion to table which doesn't carry discussion.
No, I apologize.
Okay. I think you can, I can think you can discuss any motion before you vote on it, so.
Well, now, now you got me confused.
I got a question. Is that off of South Twenty-Fifth Street? Where you saying eight oh five? Because when you say eight oh five East Broadway.
Oh, Ms. Flynn?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, you, okay, so what's, what's your address? Twenty-eight oh six? Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's the area.
Yeah, that's it.
It's Estelle Henry, yeah, that's it area.
Cheer.
If I may, as far as floors concerned, Ms. Felix, please.
So we've been going back and forth with this for a while, Ms. Thomas. And I think he brought in a trailer recently, right?
Yes, and I'm having, I'm gonna have to take.
And and is she going to remove it? However, if we go forth with this, you know, she'll have to meet the requirements for a mobile home. But that particular area is what we're focusing on getting cleaned up. Now, she has other developments that she might want to do? Other options that you have?
Yes.
Consider that.
But, Ms. Felix, she's, she's gonna, some of her property is under this moratorium that we were talking about originally.
No. And that is concerning mobile homes.
This is about the mobile homes. Right here, this is about the mobile homes.
Again, I'd like to make a motion to table until you get further clarity.
Well, yeah, now, your motion and second has been noted. I'm just finishing the conversation. If there's anything else anyone has, like to address.
Till we understand what's going on.
Okay. There's a motion and second to table this for two weeks? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Please call the row.
I think this is most, this is one of the most confusing.
If I may, Ms. Hope, we're calling row right now. Hold on just a minute.
It's very confusing.
I know, but we're calling row.
Counselor Bruce?
We vote for voting.
To table.
For two weeks?
No.
Counselor Kat?
No.
Counselor Crum?
No.
Counselor Harris? Oh, sorry, I should have. Counselor Holt?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
We have five yes votes. One, two, three no votes.
Motion fails for lack of majority. I have always been the world's worst, and I know I'm not the mayor, but I've supported this council. And if the majority feels like this is something they need to do, I'm gonna vote yes. And administration will need to bring this back to you in two weeks.
Thank you, sir.
We can get a bit of understanding.
So, permission request is denied at this time. But are you, are you allowed to change your vote with that?
Yes.
Yes. That being called on? Yes, I'm taking my vote yes. Uh, next item on the agenda is planning commission recommendations. There were three items that you have been presented with. Is there a motion to approve is submitted?
I think the one that we, I think on the planning permission recommendation, we approved the one already.
By ordinance, yes.
Yes, by ordinance.
These are just their recommendations that are here for approval today.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and second to approve the planning commission, planning commission recommendations as presented. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Under appointments, from the last council meeting, this item was tabled. It is back on the agenda today for the appointment of Kirby Carlson as the at-large position for the AMP Commission. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve Kirby Carlson?
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
No. Excuse me. Was the other person that's supposed to be submitted as well, Ms. Presley?
That was approved. That was approved at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Please call the row since there was one vote.
Counselor Bruce?
Yes.
Counselor Kat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday? Counselor Monday?
No.
Counselor Murray?
No.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
Gotcha. We have seven yes, two no votes.
Motion passes. In pre-council, we discussed adding charity days to the agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor to add charity day distribution to the agendas? Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Holt? Holt?
Mr. Holt?
Tell them.
Oh, yeah. And they make a recommendation that I approve, how much?
One thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty.
Right, the amount I have left in the money to West, first, start again. Missouri Street Church Press.
Is there anyone here else today who would like to disperse any of their funds? Mr. Willis?
Tony, I'd like to issue all mine to the Boys and Girls Clubs here in West Memphis.
On Missouri.
And Ms. Perry, is that the same amount?
Yes, same amount.
Okay. One thousand, one twenty-eight seventy-three. Any of that request?
One of the City Boys and Girls Club. Nine something, I think. I'm not sure, but I'm not balanced. Yes ma'am.
Ms. Perry, we got our Jackson Girls Club, two fifty.
Any other request? There's a, need a motion and second to approve the distribution of Mr. Holt's, Mr. Willis's, Mr. Monday's, and Mr. Bruce's distributions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We've already taken care of the citizens' request. Any announcements that need to be made?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce?
I'd like to for y'all to recognize the Academies of West Memphis Student Government that's here with us today. I have Ms. Presley in the audience. I have, I saw Ms. Wagon. I'm not sure if she's gone. But Ms. Presley is the advisor for Student Government Association at the Academies of West Memphis.
Would they like to come up and address the council?
Ms. Presley? Would the, would the president like to come up and address the council? So, we got one coming. You coming?
Alright. Chair, seeking permission to add this young gentleman to the agenda, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Kenan Whitfield. I am from the Academies of West Memphis, a part of SGA, and our advisor is Mr. Presley Crater. I just want to thank the council for giving us this opportunity. It has, uh, Biden, it has given us an opportunity to see what the council goes through when they have these meetings monthly. And to sow us truly how y'all opinions are for our city. And to really ease our minds about the safety that we're in and who the, who our leaders are for the city. I finally get to put personalities and characters to faces, and I think we all got that opportunity today being here with this meeting. I want to thank each and every one of you for this opportunity, for letting me be able to come up and be a part of the agenda. Actually, I love coming to meetings that board members or council meetings have. I've met a couple of you council members before. Y'all might know my aunt, Teresa Bowe, who's the director of the outreach. So I've, I've met a couple of you a few times from different events and things. And I love downwriting notes from the approvals for the correct minutes and the discussion that y'all had, especially over the mobile homes. And I think this was a great opportunity and great lesson for all of us from the Academies of West Memphis to have. And I thank you, each and all of you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank each, each of you for being here, and we work for you. So don't hesitate to call us when you need something.
That's right.
Ms. Felix?
Sorry for speaking out of place.
No, ma'am.
We, there should have been an item on the agenda. We have representatives from Race Track, the Travel Center, that is propounded to be out on. College Boulevard.
Yes ma'am.
If you have questions, I know it's mentioned in pre-council. If you have questions for them, they are here as representatives to answer any questions.
Of course, it was approved the planning commission recommendations. Is there, will we need to address this with an ordinance at the next meeting?
We will, if it's not on here, so we'll, next meeting.
Okay.
Also, if you're finished with her, I was not, I've been out of the loop. My daughter has surgery. I've been home taking care of her. And I had a really bad sinus infection. And I didn't, I was not at the last council meeting. And we have members from the police department who was presenting the, the vehicle that that we may be getting from the government. When we get to a point in time, can we have a motion to put them on so they can do their presentation if you all are ready for that today?
If I don't think.
And I do apologize. I missed the meeting Monday because I'm just trying to get myself back together.
I recall you bringing it up at the council meeting, so it should have been a standing item on the agenda.
It should have been on there the last meeting.
Okay.
And I was not here. I was out.
Okay, alright. Is there a motion to approve Counsel Mohammed's request to add this to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Gentlemen?
I've got a little PowerPoint if y'all want to see it. I told the Councilman Mohammed I'd put it up for y'all if you want to watch it. While I did this?
Please.
And I did give them pictures of everything before, so they're familiar with it.
Just a little down here. It's really not much, but it kind of give y'all something to look at.
Have you already given the jump drive to?
No, I don't want to get to.
While we're waiting, I mean, you could go ahead and kind of give us.
So this is, it's under the executive order fourteen zero seven four from the President coming down. It's what we have to do to get equipment from the government. So we have to just notify the council that we are applying for this. And then we've got to put it in the paper. We've got to make a public announcement for like thirty days in the paper. That's pretty much all we got to do. But when I came to the, the Police Commission about it, they were kind of confused about some things and what it was, what we were trying to obtain. So I made just a little something for y'all, just kind of the rules of what I'm doing and kind of why we need it. So, like I said, this is executive order seventeen, or fourteen zero seven four. It's intent to obtain controlled equipment. Civilian governing bodies notification of intent to request controlled equipment. So that's what I'm doing right now. And then we got to make a thirty-day public notice, notification written or electronic intent to obtain controlled equipment. These notifications should include a comprehensive list of any controlled property that may be requested throughout the year. So, go ahead to the next one. Next. Oh. There you go. So you might be saying, what's, what is controlled equipment? What we're going after is armored or tactical wheeled vehicles. So it's a vehicle that will be used exclusively for disaster-related emergencies, active shooter scenarios, hostage and other search and rescue operations, or anti-terrorism preparedness, protection, prevention, response, recovery, or relief. The SWAT team needs armor. That's what it all boils down to, is that we need protection. That is the county's MRAP. So MRAP stands for Mine Resistant Ambush Protection Vehicle. That was just last week, I think we did that hit. That was in Edmanson. We helped them out on it. Currently, we have, the only armor we have is a Humvee. I'm sure everybody has seen the Humvee that we have in the parade or whatever. It's small. It is not protected on the roof. So something happens in Southland, we are not protected. This video right here is actually from the Assistant Chief. He was out on New Year's Eve twenty twenty-two, so one-one of twenty-three. And it's not really what you see, but it's what you're gonna hear. Hopefully. There's no audio? Okay. Well, what you would have heard was automatic gunfire going off in the city. That is in our city. We don't even have automatic weapons. I wouldn't really want one, but I'm just saying, we, we're outgunned and we need protection. You can go ahead and play the next one, though. The next one is. It is the amount of protection our patrol vehicles that every patrolman's in, it's the amount of protection that the vehicle offers. Will it play? Hopefully. Okay. So, what we did was, the state police did some training, they had some vehicles, some junk vehicles, and what they did, what I did was, I put a target in the driver's seat of the vehicle, got to the back of the vehicle, and shot four of our two-two-three rounds entirely through the vehicle, and showed the hits on the target, going from back all the way through both seats. It was a Ford Explorer, so it had two seats that went, the rear hatched both seats and into the driver. I also shot four pistol rounds, same place, went through, hit the target, and then I did it, put a target on the passenger side outside of the vehicle, stood on the driver's side and shot all the way through both doors into the target. So basically, our patrol vehicles offered no protection whatsoever. So it was just a little demonstration to kind of visualize what we, what we could go through, and kind of why we are wanting the armor. Like I said, it's just a notification to y'all that we're getting it or that we're, we're applying for it. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Willis could issue these to y'all if you want, or do you have, what, do you have to purchase some?
No, it is, they are free. The government will give it to us. We have to keep up with maintenance and all of that. We have to keep up with the maintenance records. Once we are through with it, then we send it back, and that's pretty much it. So all it costs us is upkeep and maintenance. But those, those run quarter million, maybe?
Do we have to carry our vehicle insurance?
Yeah. Um, yes, it would be on our vehicle insurance, because I, I believe our Hummers are on there. We already got rid of one. One was an, a soft Hummer, it didn't have any armor. We got rid of that one. We had to keep armor, so we kept our old one. It's failing miserably. It's, the engine's going out, and so we're trying to get some type of armor before we give it up, so we don't have to rely on the county for armor.
So you have to go back to your, your police commission? After you've been here, you'll have to go back, or?
No, this is it. I just have to notify the council that we're, we're moving forward with obtaining something like that, and, and then put it in the paper, just-
About how long will it take for the city to receive the vehicle?
Well, they said that the waiting list is about two years. So the sooner we get applied and make sure we check all the boxes, the sooner we can start to get it. But it could be quick, you never know. Just if they have surplus, then they start giving them out. We have, our city is large enough that we can have two pieces of armor, so we're wanting to get one of those, and then when we get that, we'll trade our Hummer in, and we'll get a Hummer, we'll get a smaller piece of armor, because we use our Hummer for a lot of different things.
Has the advertising already begun, or you'll have to wait until after today to?
We'll start after today.
Okay.
You'll need our minutes to, to attach to your application, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Showing that you did.
Yes, ma'am.
Showing that it was approved.
Is there a motion to approve the request to apply with this equipment?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We moved around on the agenda, committee reports. I know Public Works met Tuesday, I'll present it out in two weeks. Is there any other committee that wants to give a report today?
I do have the, if no one, I have the Main Street update. I was not in attendance, but Ms. Abernathy did send me a brief synopsis. She said at the last Main Street meeting, it was basically about different ideas to raise awareness of the need for fundraising. She said one major fundraising is Taste of the Town, which is scheduled for August. Jeanetta Gillum has joined that planning committee. The grant period has ended with many properties and business owners receiving funds to help with paint, floors, and walls. The next grant period will start in July. There are already requests for funding. Ms. Abernathy attended the ribbon cutting at High Tower Park, at the corner of Fourteenth Street and Broadway. The Spring Arts pop-up show was a success with many favorite artists in attendance, and that is that report.
Thank you, councilor. Any other committees? Okay. I believe everything on the agenda has been covered. Is there any other discussion? Any other announcements that need to be made?
I do, we, we missed our police commission meeting this past Monday, and of course, that was my fault, and we've scheduled it for this coming Monday. I don't have a calendar. What day is that? Monday, May, May eighth? Monday, May eighth, at noon, here at City Hall in this council chambers, and I do apologize.
If I may, Ms. Perry has brought a recent update financial report. I don't know if you just want to have time to look at it, and she can give your report on it in two weeks, or if you want her to present it to you today.
What does Ms. Perry, Ms. Tori?
However you would, it's an expert in the market.
Okay. So to report over at the next meeting.
Okay, it'll be on the agenda in two weeks. Another announcement?
To adjourn?
We got one announcement.
Before you adjourn, I'm going to go ahead and be the bad guy. First, let me say thank you, Counselor Cat, for your assistance with these last minutes. There was some confusion, we got it straightened out after numerous times of correcting. I know that we've talked about protocol up here, you did excellent job, Mr. Cat. I know that everybody's passionate and you want to get it out, but it is very hard to determine who's doing the first motion, who's doing the second motion, and to get it on record correctly. And I'm just asking that you're actually supposed to wait to be acknowledged to speak? It went real well today, and I appreciate that, and I'm going to get these minutes done right away, but also remember to speak into your mics. Sometimes you two sound just like each other, so we just want to do accurate records. Yeah, we just want to do accurate records and not speaking over each other, we can get the information correctly. I appreciate it.
I want to apologize for raising my hand real quick while ago. I kind of, I'm kind of like a little kid, I get excited.
But that's what you're supposed to do.
I caught myself.
Okay. If there's nothing else for the council, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Would you second?
Thank you.